Okay, good evening everyone. I'd like to call for Zion High School District 126. I'd like to call our meeting to order and then we'll take turns going around the room for the other participating districts to do their process. And then we will probably talk depending on what happens with each of those roll calls, we will talk about how we're going to proceed for the evening. Thank you for those of you who've joined us. So roll calls for high school districts?
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Northstrom. Here. Thank you and I'll let the others go through their process and then we'll stand in the platter.
Marshall White.
Service District 3.
Marcia White.
Here.
Nicole Butler.
Here.
Andrea Usri.
Here.
Andy Luther.
Stephen Lindsay.
Here.
And Houston.
Here.
Kelly Rovers.
Here.
Turn it over to District 1. If your board district 1 does not have a form. Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
Ms. Stevens is President of the North Carolina Assembly of Representatives.
Okay, so thank you for being with us and as we were getting ready to start, we were trying to make sure how we were going to make sure to proceed appropriately and the representatives from districts 1 and 6 can stay and we will continue with our presentation as planned and then we'll go from there. So if you could all please stand and join me in our presence. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For District 126, a normal process, we move right into communications with staff and district residents, that's what's in the agenda of the public vote. So we had not, unfortunately, we had the sign up sheet out at the time, but I do want to make sure if there's anybody from the public who would like to speak this evening, kind of making note, I have more than one or two, we'll try to take you in the order that I see it. And then when we come up to the podium, we'll ask that you sign in because we do have a sign up sheet just so we can make sure to keep track of the folks who are making public comments. So, Ms. Stevens, correct? Come on up sir. Say your name and... Thank you.
To the ZPTHS Board, this is the sixth consecutive time I'm addressing the matter. To all other boards, this is the first time here, this committee. This evening I wanted to address a personal concern around transparency in the budgeting and oversight of our school districts. Altogether, these districts handle a budget approaching one-fifth of a billion dollars. That's over $200 million that our community contributes to the four boards, whether Harvard, Beach Park, Zion Elementary, and Zion Township District High School. They manage these funds bearing a great duty to ensure that they are used wisely and owned properly. As tax payers, we deserve transparency on how these funds are allocated, discussed, and ultimately approved. This isn't just about the numbers, but it's about the education, safety, and future of our children. Yet time and time again, these school boards conduct their budget discussions, but will the public insider be paying even us wondering where this enormous credit some truly goes? It's as if there's assumption that the public shouldn't or doesn't want to be involved in these decisions. Now, only I do acknowledge that the meeting minutes are posted as required in most cases. They don't always convey the full depth of discussion, debates, and the reason behind each decision. These minutes alone does not help this public understand the dark facets of the board members, which is vital for us to make informed choices when we elect our future representatives. What's more concerning is that many discussions and recommendations happen during committee meetings where crucial groundwork is done before breaking into the full board, often without further discussion in front of the community. Now, while I understand all meetings are open to the public, most of us aren't able to attend every meeting, yet many of us would very much want to watch recorded sessions being informed. With a budget approaching one-fifth of a billion dollars, $200 million, how can any school board think it's acceptable not to record these meetings? How is this okay? Take a lesson from other local government bodies, the city of Zion Park District, Zion Park District, that is, Zion Township and the villages of Beach Park, Atlantic Harbor. These agencies have been recording and posting their meetings for some time now, with far fewer resources, they're demonstrating a commitment to transparency, something our school board should prioritize as well. Again, nearly one-fifth of a billion dollars, that's what it'd be annually, it's too much to handle in private discussions. We need clarity on why certain financial decisions are made, how resources are allocated, and what checks are in place. As a community, we're not asking for that much, only that these elected board members fulfill their duty to communicate openly and involve us in the decision-making process, considering we're the ones funding it. We'll no longer sit quietly by and let these boards say that the committee won't matter or show up anymore, as you can see, we're showing up. Tonight, I urge all board members here, prioritize transparency. Let's open up these discussions, let's demonstrate that we value accountability and that trust our community places anywhere. With today's technology, there's no barrier to recording and sharing these meetings widely. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else who'd like to speak during public comment? Okay, yeah, comments, as Mr. Smanski's have been shared recently, and I guess they encourage people similar to what is done at every federal, state, county, municipal, school board, and other government entities, a lot of things are done in committee, a lot of things are done then in full boards, and at least from District 126, I'd like to suggest that most topics are discussed two, three, or even four times before they come to the board. So I'd encourage people to come to our meetings wherever they are and we will work to make the visibility through recording and broadcasting as much as we can, available as much as we can and as quickly as we can. Thank you. With that, no other people voicing interest in public comment, we'll move to our next agenda item under the category of surveying of success in community-connected partnerships. First item we have is an IASB presentation, and we'll make sure if it's going to be introduced by a faculty representative, like the Baltimore IASB rep, which is the Illinois Association of School Boards.
Thank you, President Northstrom, presidents of the respective boards of education. So our purpose today is to come together as a school community, and we are honored to have a representative from the Illinois Association of School Boards to talk to us about engagement, empowering, voice, governance. So we have anyone who would be able to introduce to our community, Mrs. Laura Martinez.
Hey, this is me. There you are. That's me, Erin Laura Martinez, I'm the Director of Our Region Training at the Illinois Association of School Boards. I work with the school districts in the Lake Division, the Luchus View, and also the Kishawaki and Northwest Divisions, and I am so excited to be here this evening, and I appreciate the invitation. What I am going to talk to you about this evening is just that, the what. What do you do? What is your purpose? So it's divided into two parts. I will talk to you about your what, and then you are going to tell me what your why is. I'm sure you are familiar with the what is your why expression, so we will get to that a little bit. Okay, obviously, I practiced this a lot, because I didn't know it had animation. What I have up here on the slide is a graphic of competing claims and expectations. So as a board, these are all the entities that you are responsible for fulfilling obligations and responsibilities to. The United States Constitution, federal law, federal regulations, the Illinois State Constitution, state laws, state regulations, and court decisions. All legally required for you to fulfill obligations in all of those places. So that is a lot of responsibility that rests on your shoulders. Also, there is community, because also you need to be responsive to what the community wants, although I would put the community in a little bit different category as the other circles and ovals up there. But you as a board are an entity of responsibility. What you do, what you're responsible for is enormous, it's huge, you have a huge responsibility. You've got those laws and regulations and constitution on your shoulder, you have finances to worry about, you have staff to worry about, you have one person that you evaluate, and you have the well-being of many, many students under your responsibility. So what you do is very, very important, very big responsibility. And, I know you know this, but it's unpaid, and it's volunteer, and you give up lots and lots of time for zero money, and that shows a big commitment on your part. But I want you to understand that you are unique and essential. School boards are essential in the way that school districts work, you play a very unique role in the school district system, which I will talk about in a little bit. So your work, that is your what. What do you do? I know you are familiar with IASB's foundational principles of effective governance, there's a handout at each one of your places that if you want to open that up, you can follow along and read the foundational principles, I'm just going to highlight some salient features of each one. First one is that the board clarifies the district's purpose. You are responsible for articulating the district's ends, which is a word that means core values, core values and beliefs, mission, vision, and goals. That's your responsibility as a board to articulate. What is important to your district? Why does it exist? What is its purpose? Where are you trying to go? What is your vision of a fantastic future, and what goals will help bring you there? Also, at your seats is a triangular IASB graphic called the stair steps, so you can see what alignment looks like in the district. And the quote from the language of the principle that I'm going to talk about is, "Providing the entire system with clarity of purpose and a clear direction." That's your job as a board, you give that direction. You're the only entity in the system that is charged with doing that. And you, when you are clarifying the district's purpose and you're in touch with the core values and beliefs, those are the very foundation of those stair steps. That is what everything rests on. We do this because we value and believe this about public education, and this is what we value about students, and this is what we value about teachers and education and our relationship with the community. It's all able to be tracked back down to, "We do this because we believe this," et cetera. This is where the district identity comes in, and that is also something you as a board, as an entity, wear on your shoulders. The next principle is number two, it's about connecting with the community, this is really where your unique position comes in. You detect those district ends that we were just talking about, it's not just up to the board members to decide, you need to be in touch with what the community wants for its schools. What are the community's values? That places you in a very unique position, because your job is sort of a two-way advocate. You talk to the community about what they want, you listen to them to hear what they want, and you also tell them about how they can support the district. And then you take what you hear from the community and you tell the district what the community wants. So you're in this very unique communication situation of being an advocate. No other person or entity in the district can do that. And when I was talking before about being able to trace everything back to that first stair of core values and beliefs, "We do this because we believe this about public education and students and teachers," that "we" is not just the board, that "we" is the community. And the community needs parents, and staff, and students, and people who live in your district who don't have kids, and people who live in your district who have kids that went through the system, but the kids are gone now, people that have businesses in the district, anyone who has impact or is impacted by the district. That's the "we" that the board is responsible for listening to. And the quote that I want to touch on is, "A board in touch with community-wide concerns and values will serve the broad public good, rather than being overly influenced by special interests." So think about that broad public good and how you are situated to play that role in hearing from the community. This is a quote that I heard from a board member at some point, and it's always resonated with me, it's, "Listening, learning, and discerning the strengths and needs of the district." And I think that expresses what board members do so well, listening, learning, and discerning. Was it right? Okay, the third principle is about the superintendent, that one person that the board hires and And this board and superintendent relationship is, in my mind, the most crucial relationship that exists in the district. And there's another graphic stapled there that shows the roles and responsibilities of board and superintendent, and each one has its defined roles, but absolutely the board and the superintendent work together. The quote that I want to read you is, "Mutual respect and clear understanding of respective roles, responsibilities, and expectations." So the board members understanding their role, the board members understanding the superintendent's role, the superintendent understanding the board's role, all of that matters, and being able to talk about that matters too. Maybe you're a board that wants a little more guidance from your superintendent about what your role is. Each board and superintendent team have to decide what that looks like, and that is part of the communication that needs to exist between the board and the superintendent. And at the bottom of that graphic is trust and communication, just like the core values are the very foundational step, trust and communication are the foundational pieces of the board-superintendent relationship. And I really can't overstate the importance of communication. In this day and age, how many ways are there to communicate? Calling, texting, sending a letter, sending an email, I don't know, Instagram, but I wouldn't use that as a way of communicating. And making sure that you are clear with your superintendent about what you prefer, and then the superintendent needs to figure out what seven different people prefer, that's part of talking about what you do and understanding the roles. Like a superintendent who usually sends out lots and lots of messages, then if one day they know nothing's going on, and they don't, maybe the board member thinks something's wrong, even though nothing is wrong, it's just that they're so used to the certain case. So talking about how you want to communicate, you can't over-communicate, and you can't be too clear about what's important for you as a board to hear about. The board sets the tone for the district, that's part of the board's responsibility. But I also think that the board and superintendent relationship contributes to that tone. And here's another quote that I heard from a board member about this, "When the board doesn't evaluate the superintendent, neither side grows." And I like that because it shows how important both parties are to the evaluation. You have hired this expert, you need to evaluate that expert and help him or her grow, and it's also part of your role as being accountable to the community. Next, move on to foundational principle number four, the board delegates authority. This is the quote, "Ultimately, the school board is responsible for everything, it must recognize that everything depends upon a capable and competent staff." Responsible for everything, everything in the district is on your shoulders. All those legal obligations, the well-being of students, the staff, the budget, that's on your shoulders as the entity of responsibility, but you're not the one who's actually doing the work, you don't get paid. The people who get paid are the ones who are actually doing that work, so delegating to those people is really important. The only person you delegate to is the superintendent. And that is a very high level of delegation, which means a very high level of trust and a high level of empowerment. But as long as you as a board do what you need to do by saying, "This is what we want, we've listened to the community, we know we've hired this expert, we hand it over," walk away, that does require a huge amount of trust. So this principle can sometimes really require discipline from board members who are used to, in their other roles, getting in and helping and wanting to do something, because it's part of a lot of reasons why some people are on the board, is to get in and help. But this principle is more about stepping back, and that can be a challenge. But the clearer you are about what it is you expect, and the higher level of authority that you can delegate, the better it works out. Another part of delegating is making sure your policy manual is up to date, that's another place where you can express what it is that you want, so as long as you're clear about that, you can be confident that you've done your part. Number five is about monitoring performance. The quote here is that the board has a moral obligation to itself and the community to determine whether that authority is being used as intended. That high level of delegation and empowerment, is that being used as you wanted it to be. So here's this moral obligation that the board has. You have set goals, are those goals being met? You need to know that, you need to know if they're not, and find out why, and if they are, great, you can celebrate. What you're monitoring is, are we getting what we want, if not, are they doing it how I wanted it to be done? Because the "how" part is the staff, and you also need to be asking, "How do we know?" And you're using data to monitor, you're not depending on somebody you went to at the store or something you see on social media. You need to be monitored with data. And this principle also ties into number two, because sitting in trust for the community, you need to make the community aware of how things going. They give the district their two most precious resources, their students and their money, and they want to know how things are going. So being clear for you, understanding how things are going, and then being able to communicate and inform the community is important. And finally, my favorite principle, number six, taking responsibility for yourself. Collectively and individually, taking full responsibility for board activity and behavior. It's up to the board to govern itself, there's no one higher than the board. So it's your responsibility to make sure you're doing what you need to do. And if there's an issue that the board member, it's up to the board to deal with it, not the superintendent, who is not the human resources director of the board. And it is important to deal with any issues that might come up on the board. When you take responsibility for your work, you are saying, "We accept this role, this responsibility, we understand this burden, but it's an important burden that we have on our shoulders." People want to be part of a high-functioning organization, and you setting the tone of doing what you need to do and being high-functioning, and demonstrating a productive relationship with the superintendent, only means good things for the workings of your district, but also attracting future staff, maybe future board members. And then finally, the quote is, "The school board's role as trustee for the community is unique and essential to both the district and the community." Seven people elected or appointed coming from different backgrounds and different philosophies maybe, talking together, working as a team, that is what the beauty of the board is. And no other entity in the district, as I said, has all these responsibilities as the board does. So I want to say, "Thank you for being willing to do this service, this unpaid, thankless service." Also, I want to remind you that School Board Members Day is November 15, make sure it's on your calendar, and make sure that you are celebrating. Some other things to keep in mind is that your learning never stops, and also appreciating and believing that your learning as board members never stops, there's always going to be new laws, there might be some sort of global health crisis that you might need to navigate and learn about. You go to conferences and professional development to continue the learning. Your commitment to this work and the huge responsibility and the unpaid hours that you spend, that also is something to be commended. And then you, as tone setters, sitting at the top, you do model behavior, whether you are aware of it or not. So for instance, at your board meetings, you model how to talk to people, to each other, how to have a conversation, how to express your opinion, and most importantly, or one of the most important things, is how to disagree. And I have found that time and time again, boards that are pretty high in the functioning scale are able to disagree, but, not but, disagree and do it respectfully. And being able to model that for the district, for staff, for the community is huge, huge responsibility. But you're also modeling continuous learning, and learning about yourselves, and thinking about your own behavior, and maybe changing something if you're doing something that's not effective, or if you're doing something that's impeding the superintendent's ability to do their job. This is another quote from a board member, "Every time we work as a team, we win." Because you are part of a team, you maybe you, what's the word, campaign as an individual, but if you win, you're seated, you're part of seven, you're one of seven, your voice matters as much as everybody else's, and you have to learn how to work with each other, which does take time or can. So some more things to keep in mind. Okay, so that's your what. The what is what you do, commitment, huge responsibility. Now we're going to talk about your why. So maybe you have been asked this question, but I'm going to ask it to you right now, "Why on earth would you want to be on a school board?" And maybe you were asked this question a few years ago, I don't know, but here are some arguments that someone might make about why you might not want to be on a school board. For instance... For instance, why on earth would you want to be on a school board? It takes up so much time, needs, preparing for meals, emails, reading them, sending them, texting, reading them, sending them, attending events, going to conferences, going to regional professional development events. Why would you want to give up your time to do that? Another argument against it. You have to listen to negative comments from people and not respond. So like if a public comment, people can't come up. It's the law. They are allowed to be heard by the board. They can say stuff. I mean, okay, there's some legal requirements, I know. But you are there to listen and you don't respond. Well, you shouldn't respond. And you just keep a straight face. That's hard. Another argument is, all you hear about is how bad schools are and how students are feeling miserably. You might hear that about your own district. You might hear things about your own district that are negative. Another argument is, your school district, you never have enough money. And here's the reason my tax bill is so high. So why would you want to serve on something where you're never going to be able to do what you want to do? And finally, you don't really get to do anything. What do you do anyway? You don't get to go in and get rid of a bad teacher. You don't get to go in and get rid of a bad coach. You don't get to go in and throw out some program that you personally aren't interested in. So what exactly is it that you do? So those are all arguments against being a board member. But now, I want you to think about what your response is when someone might say to you, "Why do you want to be on a board? What's in it for you? What's so great about it?" So I have put on each of your tables some colored paper. So it's light blue for Zion Benton and it's green for Beach Park. This is a group activity. I want you, as a board, to come up with three responses to, "What is your why? Why are you doing this?" So I will give you five to 10 minutes and then each board will share with the group. So you can, I don't know, move to a, move your chairs around so you can talk to each other. You can go on those round tables. But I would like you to talk to each other and try to, as a group, come up with three reasons why you want to be on the board. All right? Give me a minute.
My one, I lead in the public school system. And I feel that sometimes the public school system is very difficult. And I like being involved to help find the best leadership possible to make your public schools a better place.
I don't know. Number one is, I don't know. Number two is convince. Take a couple of minutes, we'll come up with our own and then we'll consolidate.
Yeah, that's perfect.
We know you're out.
Steve, you're out.
You have to say something.
I have to say something? Involved, talented kids. No, I think everybody hits on many of the same things. You're in and you're out. We all have similar reasons. But the neat thing about, and I was just reflecting on this as I, again, I'm out soon, was over the years, I've seen, I've seen good boards and I've seen bad boards. And the key of a good board is that everybody is here for different reasons, but we come together for one reason of the whole. You may, you may come with a different individual reason, but we all work together. And this board really has collectively come together with many different thoughts and insights. And it's, I enjoy working with people who may not look like me.
You don't have to.
Yeah.
We'll keep you.
So it's just that. It's bringing people of different values and beliefs all together for one common goal. That's what I like to do.
I don't think I can say a whole lot more than that because I graduated from Beach Park. I've lived in this community my whole life. I care about this district. I care about these kids. I can see all the good things that happen.
Work on this and to talk to each other. I heard some really excellent conversations. Although, I'm not here to judge anyone, so pretend I didn't say that. Okay, so each one of you is going to read your three whys, your responses to why on earth would you want to be on a school board. And I think a microphone is great. So Jerry, are you reading yours?
I guess I'll do this and then I'll ask for a district to. As general themes, it appears we're able to have general agreement around, want to have community involvement and engagement to support the educational community, student advocacy and supporting educational improvements, and ensuring resources are in place for student success.
Can you repeat the first line?
Community involvement and engagement in support of the education community.
Okay. Thank you. Oh.
Oh, they have to.
Thanks. Whoever did that?
Okay. Okay, ours, our future success for our students. Second is building a strong community foundation. And third, steward of the larger community.
Okay. Thank you so much for sharing. Was it hard to come up with reasons? I'm shaking your head no.
It's just that each person interprets the question differently. So you kind of have to interpolate. There were themes. Luckily, we had somebody who was talking, pulled the themes together, but they kind of boiled it down. There were three or four or five different themes that each person was really talking about.
Yeah. So even though, and someone said this, Steve, I can barely read your name, but I think it was you. Was it Steve?
Yeah.
I'm not calling on you. I'm just giving you credit. That everybody on the board is different and that's really important. And you, each person, might come to the board for a different reason or bring different passions to the board. But really, all board members do this for basically the same said, you said, four or five reasons. And you can rely on that as sort of a touchstone, just like those core values and beliefs of the stair steps. That's why you do what you do is because of that. And keeping that in mind, because you care so much about your district and you care about the community, you care about the future. It's really serving the future. So I knew it wouldn't be hard for you to come up with those reasons. And I appreciate your participation in that. The why and the what. I talked about the what. You talked about the why. Keeping the why in mind, I think, helps you achieve the what. Helps you keep your eyes on what your what is. Okay, that's too many whats. A couple of things to leave you with. One is, the best way to serve your district and your community is to wrap yourselves up in governance. And that is a term I just invented. It's to focus on your ends. Always think about your core values and your mission and your goals and monitoring and your relationship with the community. That's where your energy and attention needs to be. That's your role. And sometimes it seems like you could help by doing other things. But sometimes doing those other things can be getting on the... Dan's board, thank you so much. I was hoping somebody would know where I was going with that. And the way to think about it is think upward and outward more than downward and inward. It's sort of pushing up to the balcony, to continue that analogy. And this is from one of our resources. But it helps me picture what it should look like when you are governing. And I just want to remind you that you are unique and you are essential. And each district is unique. And you are the entity of responsibility for your district. You carry the future on your shoulders. And your role is so essential and so unique. And it's a big responsibility. And again, I would want to thank you for your service. I'm done.
Thank you, Laurel.
Go ahead, Dr. Frigga, next part of our agenda.
Yeah, the next part of the agenda centers on Vision 2030. But before we do that, thank you, Ms. Martinez, for reminding us that commitment to service is important, that we win together, that the boards of education of District 1, 3, 6, and 123, they set direction and they have commitment to excellence. And they do it by design, not by chance. Also, as a school community, we must have a growth mindset because success is intentional. And happiness when we work together with mutual respect and consistent communication and trust. So those themes resonate as you spoke to us. And we thank you for that. And with that, we're going to an SMN I R, which is District 2030. So you are going to hear more and more about this at the state level. So I will start with the work that we're doing as superintendents, different organizations, in setting the vision for success for the state of Illinois. But then also talk about what we're doing together as a local school district in the Zion Benton area. So the first slide I use in here is District 2030. This idea that our future cities, because all of our schools, from kindergarten all the way to a high school, they are cities. So you do have a four school districts working together. You're no longer as an elementary school district, a pillar. You are a foundational school district. So that is how we perceive this partnership. Is the idea of education as a K-12 enterprise, where we focus on the, we're being of all students, from kindergarten to senior to high school level. So again, that is what the superintendents, along with our boards, are working together achieving. But we do that in partnership with other organizations and the state of Illinois. So here you have eight organizations that have come together to partner around this idea of Vision 2030 for the state of Illinois, which carries to the work that we do as school boards and superintendents. So we do have two superintendents from Lakeview, you know, a superintendant from Libertyville and myself from District 126, representing Lakeview. And along with many other educators, over 120 educators, coming together to set a pathway for success for the state of Illinois. And with that, we started with four different pillars, four different areas and many, many, many strategies. So what you will hear at the Triple I conference coming up in the next couple of weeks are more than likely, this is what we're at right now, these three pillars, that as a state with focus on future focused learning, shared responsibility or accountability, and predictable funding. Each pillar will have three or four priority statements. So a very focused approach in, I don't want to say educating, that's not a bad word, but in partnering or in advocating to our legislators and also our governor and the state of Illinois, indicating that these two areas are very, very important for the future of education in the state of Illinois. So that's really what it's about. And with that, we're looking at how do we protect funding. Currently, with an evidence-based funding, the state advocates $350 million for this very important strategy in making sure that we have equitable funding. So we need to protect that $350 million. So I need our superintendents, we all need our board of education to really advocate for this type of funding and this type of allocation as it relates to dollars. In reality, what is needed in order to have advocacy for all school districts in the state is approximately $550 million. So there is advocacy for that. There's people indicating that that's needed so that you have equitable funding in the different school districts. Currently, what we have is $250. And that is something that, again, we must protect, something that we must work together in making sure it stays. And hopefully, it increases. So that is one of the areas that is important, predictable funding. Another area that is important is having flexibility as it relates to licensing and programs. This idea of increased autonomy at a local level as we do have a shortage of teachers in the state. So that is something that is also in, talk about an area of focus, an area of concentration, that there is flexibility in licensing. So that's also important to us. This one is huge. And you do have even local legislators talking about this. Mandated relief. So what does that mean? As you can see here, in Illinois, it's cool. It has done maybe triple. I mean, there's a lot of unfunded mandates. So what we're asking the state, and we're asking to have it is that perhaps all those mandates are not mandated, but recommended. And local school boards can make the decision based on the needs of the school board or the school district. So again, this is something that we really want to see because a lot of the mandates are unfunded. And if there are going to be, if it's going to be a mandate, we want the mandate to be funded. Otherwise, less work really. We do know that maybe those mandates are good. There was a good idea behind it. But perhaps it doesn't match in local school district. And it should be up to the district to decide whether to do it or not. So that is something very, very innovative and something that we would like to see. It's basically called relief. So as you come to these legislators, please show support for this. It will help with the idea that the funding can be used to what is needed as opposed to... as opposed to funding to be allocated into mandates that are not relevant to a school district. So that's absolutely huge. So basically, what I did here for a summary of Vision 2030, you are going to hear more about this in II and in the next couple of months, but the idea is that we ensure that there's predictable funding from the state level in supporting our school districts, that we improve post-secondary success, that it starts with the little, all the way to high school. Also, that we effectively work together to create a pathway for student success. So that is important, the idea of shared accountability, no excuses, we have the best students locally, how do we ensure that they're successful? So that is something that we want to see. So basically, how does that translate into the work that we do, you know, as a local school district? So you have a high school school district, and you have three foundational school districts, all working together. So the idea is that we have an strategic plan. Some districts are initiating this idea. District 126 approved an strategic plan about three years ago, four years ago, District 3, you know, which part, just approved an strategic plan, and District 6 is working on an strategic plan. So basically, what we want to see, and what is important, is that you don't plan a budget, you budget a plan. And what is a plan? That is your strategic plan. So if whatever you do in this strategic plan is important, we must organize our budgets to ensure that it's properly, that it's appropriately funded. So that is an exercise that we have been doing here, District 126, for a couple of years, and we just call it what it is, we don't plan a budget, we budget a plan, and that plan is an strategic. So we're coming to an end with that plan, ours is already institutionalized, but we're working on a new one. So that is something that I think will bring us together, that we all have an strategic plan aligned to Vision 2030, where we are allocating funds in order to support those plans. Those plans, as superintendents, I mean, we have a discussion about those plans, and we agree that readiness is important, high school ready, and college, life, and career ready. So the idea that our students are high school ready for the foundational schools is important, so that our students lead high school, and they're college, life, and career ready, preparing our students for success. The idea of a city graduate, the idea of the portrait of the learner, I mean, those are things that we hear in our foundational schools that are really inspiring and motivating. So again, I mean, in short, we do have, from the state level, a representation for us, we are really pushing hard and making sure that those three areas are addressed, future focused learning, being innovative, also predictable funding, and last but not least, shared accountability. But then we come together as local school districts with our strategic plans, and we make sure that our students, you know, enjoy success. And when we do that as a team, we do know that success is intentional, success is contagious, you know, we are going to ensure that we have, you know, an excellent, deliberate service as it relates to education in the San Antonio area. So that's, you know, my piece of the presentation, and an S and J diagram is our legacy statements with, with our superintendent, Mr. Runcardi.
Might lock in here? All right. Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, thank you for the three board of education here tonight, the science six representative. First off, I wanted to pass along apologies from my board president, we thought we were going to have five here tonight, but we had two late scratches, so obviously weren't available to call the forum. But my board does value what we're doing here as a group, as a collective group between multiple school districts. So I will be going through this with them, I have been going through it with them in the past, we have community meetings prior to our regular meetings, and during that time period, we talk about what we're doing here as a group, what we're doing as foundation schools and what we're doing at the high school to represent, to better our kids every day within our system. So with that being said, we've been working on these legacy statements for a few years now, and I'm just going to kind of give a quick recap. We started this process back in the fall of 2022, and during that time period, each school district sat down and wrote out their own legacy statements, and those legacy statements became part of each individual school, okay? And I felt, I felt that we were really on the right track, and Dr. Rodriguez is holding up his piece of wood, our piece of wood at Winter Harbor was held by our board presidents who moved, and we think it got disposed of some. So fortunately, we had it written down, and we had our part of the legacy statements for Winter Harbor. But in the fall of '23, we learned collectively then to really sit down and talk about, what is this going to look like for all four districts, okay? And how can we move forward as four districts working as one? And this has really been the piece that I think has solidified our focus. I know when we sit down in our admin meetings with Dr. Rodriguez, Dr. Wilcox, and now Dr. Lawson, we talked about how we want to move forward and what we can do to better not only our boards with more information before our kids and their growth. So tonight, hopefully, we can solidify that joint legacy statement. So the joint legacy statement is pretty simple, it's a set of commonalities that districts share and serve as unified declaration of the values, experiences, and guidance to pass on to future board members. And I think that's very important now, because we're going to have obviously board elections in April. So what that means is we want to have that foundation set for not only current board members, but future board members, because it's going to be really nice for future board members to stand and say, well, what are you working on? And we can show them, this is what we have been working on, and this is what we're moving towards. That doesn't mean that this is set in stone, that what we are going to discuss tonight is going to be our legacy statements for the next 20 years, but what that means is, this is our grounding, our base for where we're going to go for the future. Dr. Rodriguez talked about Vision 2030, I think this aligns with Vision 2030 in terms of what we're doing on a daily basis, and it should give back to you as board members when you talk to community members about what your vision is and where you're going as a district. So the statements in front of you are based on a list of core beliefs that each board member brought to the table when discussing the legacies. But there are six core belief statements that make up the rationale behind what a legacy statement is, and that means it shall have a shared vision and values, it shall provide guidance for future boards, it shall encourage responsibility, it shall provide non-emotional, it shall highlight benefits, and it shall show personal growth and understanding. With the sake of time, I'm going to condense these a little bit, and move forward and talk about some of those statements that encourage responsibility and engagement that we have daily with parents and community members. So when we're encouraging responsibility and engagement, we have to take a look at legacy and giving. It can serve as a platform for our particular goals to encourage social responsibility and family and community engagement. We can look at inspiring service, future boards may be inspired to continue efforts initiated by both families and community. Again, this is what we're trying to put within our three statements here, that foundation that we can move forward on. The legacy statement also has meaningful reflection, it's the process of creating joint legacy statements allows for deep meaningful reflection on life goals and values, something we do every single day, especially in education when we talk about the growth of our kids, we do it every single day. How can we provide valued goals in growth? Healing and understanding, it can be emotionally healing, providing a sense of closure for what we all, what we are all here to accomplish, the growth of all students. And we really kind of talked about the word "all" because we don't want anybody getting lost when we're talking about the growth of every student, we have to talk about all students, not the top 5%, not the bottom 5%, not the middle, all of them. The legacy statement also talks about mutual discovery, the process of a joint legacy statement can lead to new discoveries about others' values, priorities, and aspirations. Growth and relationships, for school boards, it can be a bonding exercise that deepens emotional connections and enhances mutual respect and understanding. And again, we played some terrific games in the past when we made our legacy statements, but it gave you that bonding experience, it gave you that understanding and that motivation to create something in this document that I handed out that is very powerful for each A joint legacy statement not only serves as a lasting testament of shared values and beliefs, but also strengthens school boards and provides future boards with meaningful guidance. In a nutshell, that's what it's for. So now, you've had time to kind of listen to me, take a look at the joint legacy statements. We want to put this to death, we want this to be accomplished and to move forward. So with just a thumbs up, or maybe a thumbs down or sideways, let me know what your thoughts are on those three legacy statements that are in front of you. Are you ready to solidify this joint legacy statement, or do we need some more work? No, this is the first time I use this. And so, I got this. Any thoughts, concerns? We ready to show thumbs?
A basic question, I'm trying to make sure you understand, your legacy statements that we're looking at were derived through... The origin of these was...
The origin of these legacy statements...
We're basically on the same page, because I think some people have come and gone from when we did this before.
So the origins of the legacy statements came from the individual school districts, and then the combination of working together?
Over the last...
Over the last two years?
Yes.
So what you see in front of you, or a single district legacy statement, it's the collective legacy statement between all four school boards working together. Now, when we talk about what we're going to do with these legacy statements in the future, this is something that's going to obviously provide the basis of what we're doing as a collective group, but it doesn't mean that this is the end all. So we can review this and take a look in the future if we need to make adjustments, because obviously, time change, things change, growth changes, and we need to change and adapt too. So when that comes up, or we're, when administrative release, we take a look and say, hey, these legacy statements might not be relevant to what we're trying to do right now, we need to revisit this, and we can do that. Our level. Agreed? And nodding is good. You want your thumbs up? Thumbs up if you like it, we'll move forward, we will solidify the legacy statement.
And this is all three, not just one at a time?
All three. All three.
Are all districts taking one?
All districts, this is for all districts.
Okay, okay.
All districts. So all four districts are going to use this as our target. Some districts might even take a look at adding this to their policy, some districts might take a look at adding this to their agenda items for action, so there's many different ways that you can go about this to further advance the legacy statements. All right, same thumbs up, so we are going to then solidify all the legacy statements, and that objective completed. So with that, I will pass along for participation and involvement and engagement with Dr. Wilcox.
Dr. Lawson. Dr. Lawson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Julie Lawson, superintendent, science six, I'm happy to be here with you this evening. Thank you. So I think that my spot, I'm forgotten by someone else this evening, but I will do my absolute best to work through participation, involvement, engagement with you. Don't worry about it. All right, so just a little hiccup, that's what happens when we work with four folks. So I can imagine your challenges with seven. So let me begin my session. The opportunity to work with these awesome superintendents has been one that's absolutely amazing. So in the past, I've worked with colleagues who've come together collaboratively to work with lots of folks in the room, but this is the first time that I've worked with three other superintendents around the same collective goals, idea, thinking about this goal of having one community. So one of the best experiences I've experienced that I've had as a professional, probably over 20 years of during my time in education. So one of the things that we've talked about in terms of participation, involvement, and engagement is oftentimes as school leaders, we ask parents and community members, let me just acapella just a little bit, recently I've had surgery, so please excuse my voice, the end of the day, causing a little bit of pain, so if you could just bear with me a minute, I would appreciate it, thank you. So as educators, we oftentimes talk to our parents, our community members about participation, involvement, and engagement, sometimes we use those terms interchangeably. So one of the things that we've talked about as superintendents is making sure that for our boards and the folks who are visiting here with us tonight, understand the difference between each of the three terms. So as you can see, participation, receiving information from school and talking with children at home, so examiners. You look at Power School once in a while to check in on student progress, and you might volunteer in classrooms, so parent participation. How does that differ from involvement? What is involvement? So involvement is the act of participation of parents or primary caregivers in their child's education and development. An example might look like chaperoning events, attending and participating in parent-teacher conferences, one-way communication between school and home. Questions so far, as it relates to the differences between participation and involvement. Beautiful. Engagement, which is a lot more deep, more meaningful, but that's active participation, it's regular, two-way, meaningful communication between schools and families. Examples might include schools intentionally giving parents opportunities to offer their own input, develop their own abilities, and take ownership over ideas. So sometimes you might see maybe how to stop all the parent communication, how do I help a student who may be special needs with learning at home, so you might see some of those things. So you might see some of those things included in, uh, parent communication that comes home that helps you to engage with your child, helps you become, to become a more active participant. Um, that's something that's regular and it's two-way communication. So are you able to then give your schools or your school's community feedback? Um, and is that a communication that you have between home and school meaningful? Alright, so let's do a little bit of play game. What we are going to do is show you a picture and you'll raise your hand. It will be called upon and you'll say whether you think it demonstrates participation, involvement, or engagement. Questions about the activity? Alright, you can double your points if the picture shows less than engagement by giving an example of what it would look like. Sorry.
Yep, sorry, I screwed that up.
I'm sorry. Of what it would look like for engagement? Alright. Pictureable, participation, involvement, or engagement?
I'll jump at once.
If you need me to circle back to definitions for a moment?
Yeah, yeah.
We have some things.
I would say involvement.
Involvement?
It's engaging, I guess.
The engagement, there's another for engagement?
I said participation. Participation.
Participation. Can you help me to first, just a little test? Can you just tell me why you said you thought it was involvement? Yep.
I just thought because the parent was there with her son and she was involved in whatever activity they were doing.
Parent was there with child, parent is involved in whatever activity is happening on site.
And I thought because the parent, I thought just involved. She's involved with the students.
She's, one more time.
I said, I thought it did look like a parent just involved with the students.
Just involved with the students. So let me circle back to our definitions.
Or with the classroom.
Beautiful. So, participation is receiving information from the school and talking with the child. So again, example, looking at Power School once in a while to check on student progress. You might volunteer occasionally in a classroom. Involvement, active participation of parents or primary caregivers in their child's education and development. Chaperoning events, attending and participating in parent-teacher conferences, one-way communication between school and home. And the answer again was, going back, it was involvement, right? Okay.
Participation.
Participation. There we go. Right? Sorry. Participation. Thank you.
How many points was that?
Well, you get the double points if you can tell us then how we can make that, um, engagement. How can we turn that into engagement? Go back to our picture.
Okay, so you got several parents there with students, so... I think it could go both ways. I think it's a both ways.
Tell me what you mean by a both ways.
Maybe it could be involvement or participation.
It could be involvement or participation. How can we rank that out to say that this parent is engaged?
How about getting other parents involved in the activity?
Getting other parents involved in the activity? Any other things?
Somebody from the school reaching out to her and saying like, you look like a leader, it's clear you're enjoying this. Would you ask other parents and students? How would you feel about asking other parents and students engaging with you?
Yes and yes. So maybe the school develops the activity for parents and students. Maybe it's an opportunity for parents and students to have some interaction and then return that interaction to have it with the, um, officials there at the school on site. Beautiful. Alright, so... The next question, remember how you get the points. Participation, involvement, or engagement?
We have a little more information about what they're actually doing in the picture.
They're looking at a district strategic plan with teachers, parents, and the superintendent.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh. So I heard a couple things. I heard probably four engagement answers, and then I heard involvement. Talk to me about what we think the difference is. So let me hear engagement first.
Well, your review and reports, you're really engaged into the knitting ready for it. I think that's engagement.
More levels of people involved. Like you're engaging different parents, staff, superintendent, you know, you're all different levels of... And it's already a different level of cross-cultural relationship.
So we're talking about active participation, talking about maybe two-way meaningful communication, right? Being a strategic plan, and we're talking about between schools and families. So we're making some assumptions here as it relates to the input that's happening there, um, and folks maybe taking some ownership as it relates to being involved in the district strategic plan. Now, there was a involvement. Miss Steve? You changed your mind. I'll give you a little bit of a point for that.
No, no, arguing involvement versus engagement side for a minute.
Let's do it.
Um, I, I just don't feel it's based on one picture, one snapshot in time. How can we call it regular, ongoing, two-way communication?
Thank you.
So I would say involvement instead of engagement.
What would be an example of regular, two-way communication, involvement, engagement? If you were having regular...
Right, if this was a regular meeting of this room and we had more information, that's why I asked. We have a little more information on what's on the picture. Um, it's one meeting, so how do we know it's a regular, ongoing? We, we talk about transparency. Transparency needs to be an ongoing commitment to transparency. All this needs to be, to be then become true community engagement and engage everybody. We need to be regular.
Now, that's how you get two points, Steve. One of the other things... One of the other things that I'd say is, um, going back to this idea of active participation. The photo doesn't necessarily tell us whether or not these folks are active, right? So I see a parent who's like straight to the back there. Uh, she's present, but we just can't tell from what we see, um, how she's actively participating in the portal. She might be paying attention. She's really engaged, much greater point. Participation, involvement, or engagement?
I'll answer your question already, Steve. It's a parent-teacher conference. Involvement.
Wow. I heard involvement. I heard involvement. Want to say you, Austin? Here we go. Participation, involvement, or engagement?
Or just helping with a class project.
Halloween parties.
I'll give you what that looked like, that could be.
I think that's involvement.
Thank you.
Chaperoning.
Involvement. I heard involvement.
Event, attending, having...
Yeah. Involvement? Final answer? Go to final answer, involvement.
Participation.
Participation. Talk to us a little bit about the difference between the involvement and the participation.
A narrative. Be equal. Oh, so sorry. They're just volunteering in the classroom. They're helping with a class project, so they're participating. It's not two-way communication. It's just participating in what's happening in the classroom. They're volunteering their time.
But involvement isn't two-way.
Yes.
Then I do have a question. So what does it take to get into the engagement part where somebody who's not an employee would be given the freedom to give their own input and develop their own abilities within the school setting with two-way communication?
Yep, so that's a great question. And so what we have to do as school leaders is find creative ways to engage our parents. So again, synonymically, we use participation, involvement, and engagement. As you can see here, there's some difficulty in even thinking about how is one different from the other? And so, when you think about parent engagement, how are we looking to move the deal for students academically? Engagement is the key. So we have to think collectively, collaboratively, creatively around how to engage our parents. They're going to look different from classroom to classroom, and it's going to look different from school to school and from one school district to another. Um, however, the question becomes for the team involved in that thing is how do we get active participation from our parents? How do we glean that regular, two-way, meaningful, um, communication between our school or our teachers and our families? Um, and again, that's for schools to figure out, or teachers to figure out, or some teams to figure out. But it is done with a great deal of intentionality, right? So when I think about participation, I show up to, uh, some of my daughter's report card alongside mom. I'm there, I don't ask any questions. Mom's having a conversation. Am I engaged? Nope, I show up, sure. Um, am I involved? Might be deeply involved in my child's life, but in terms of my involvement with the school, not so much. Am I participating? Yep, because I came in, I signed a sheet, and I said I'm here. So the question for the school teacher, whomever, then becomes, how do we engage parents who are not engaged in children's communication? Because one of the things that research tells us is that the homeschool connection is critically important. So again, we should make sure that there's some intentional play that's happening between, um, at schools to make sure that we deeply engage our parents, and make sure that that engagement is meaningful for parents, right? Is that kind of answer the question?
I hope yes.
Kind of yes.
Thank you.
Participation, involvement, engagement? What are they doing?
Very similar. They're taking pieces of the strategic plan and they're talking about what their goals are for the year, specific to every school in the district.
Who's the "they"?
So the superintendent, parents, staff, and specifically in this picture, they're talking about school safety and security of their employees and how they're going to ensure that they keep all staffs to the same.
In the shadows. I'd say engagement. It seems to be about as, I mean, though it might not happen five or six or seven times, you'd assume that if they got to this point by having some level of this group communicating more than one time before they get to the point of this. So if it's an iterative process of some kind where you get to a point of having this conversation, I would call that engagement.
I'll buy what Jerry's selling.
So, um, I would certainly agree, but here's the, here's the other thing. Um, so for me, I could see somebody who's participating in this picture. I could see somebody who is involved, and I would also make some assumptions around maybe one or two folks who are actively engaged in it. So a few things that jump out for me when I look at this picture and I selection. One is maybe somebody's just present. They got an invite to join the, uh, strategic planning committee. They showed up, participated. Um, maybe there's somebody who's involved, who's sharing some ideas. And then maybe there's some district communication we have, happening between superintendent or district personnel around, hey, here are my thoughts. I see some notes here of the safety and security, um, sticky. So maybe those, the, the thoughts of the young lady to our left, maybe, yeah, your left as well, who is deeply involved or engaged with the district. So I would also think about the planning of the activity, right? That helps me to either have folks participate, be involved, or engaged. Again, because this is done with intentionality. So I would love to assume that all folks here are engaged. This still photo of time says that we could have either one of the three. So Jerry, because you are an awesome participant, I'll give you a couple points. And Steve, I'll give you a point for bringing these folks in.
Well, I think, and I guess this might, you know, still hard what we're saying later, but, um, pretty much every interaction, whether that's meeting like this, meeting like that, there's going to be those layers, bystanders, active participants, whatever, the one-timers, the lifers. And I guess that's where you have to figure out how to connect the value of each one of those people when they plug in or on.
Great point. And I think one of the things that we have to, um, keep at the forefront of our minds is how are we engaging our community? Are we calling folks to participate? Are we asking folks to be involved? Or are we deeply engaging our parents and our community, um, in the education of our children? And here it is, our goal is to engage. Parent engagement is our priority. So, again, participation and involvement, great activities, right? But participation doesn't involve you, um, deeply. Um, it's surface level, and we want to make sure that we keep a deep level of engagement to develop a partnership between school and home. So here's a question for the group, I'll take hands. What can we do collectively to make parent engagement our number? So one of the things I think that I've learned, um, since coming to 6 is, again, we have parents who participate, we have parents that are involved, but I'm not yet seeing deep levels of engagement. And I would love to hear your thinking around ideas, um, for us to collectively make parent engagement our number. And we can just pop for them, if you'd like to.
I guess making things, well, two things. Make things as personal as they can be, meaning they're not theoretical. Get somebody hooked because they can see where it affects their student. And make it understandable. A lot of times in this environment, there's a lot of jargon. And try to make sure that whatever you're talking about, asking people to pay attention to or get involved in or decide, that they feel that they are informed enough to participate without intimidating. Because they don't, you know, a lot of people go to meetings and sometimes they're like, oh, hey, just go sit back. I don't want something dumb. I think we need to make sure that all of us are more intentional, making sure that people understand what we're saying, what we're asking. And so that when they want to plug in, again, whether it's that one time or a hundred times, we get the value out of whatever their decision was to get involved at that time.
Thank you. In addition, how do we collectively make parent engagement our number?
I think we need to make parents feel welcome.
Great idea.
I think there's a lot of times where, um, parents don't feel welcome in their child's education. And we need to open the door for that, make that opportunity be more willing to listen.
It's probably one of the most common things that I've heard from parents, like, I just don't feel welcome. I don't feel, um, like I'm known of. Right, so I just, I just kind of say it like allow schools and districts to do it. Anything else? Additional?
I think that also sometimes parents come in kind of based on, maybe...
I think that also sometimes parents come in, kind of based on, maybe they've had poor experiences with school themselves, right? Maybe they've had legal issues, there's lots of issues, so they're, can always, they can appear to always be on the defensive, so they can come into that school with an attitude, so to speak. And I think that it's easy for a school to take that back, to respond in the same way, but to remember that everyone's experience is different. It's kind of like having somebody that's, like, can't say, afraid of the system and not comfortable there, and always been told that they're maybe not good enough or whatever, and trying to change that to make it a safe space for people that have had negative experiences with them in school districts.
So maybe making our vibrates a little warmer, a little bit more accepting, or understanding for parents?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
If you increase your... If you increase your participation and your involvement, that's your candidate pool for engagement. And you have to show these parents that there's a pathway to engage. You may have to point that out, but they have to know there's a possibility to take that communication further, and they have to feel heard. If they don't think anybody's listening to them, why would they try to engage? And I guess that goes along with making them feel warmer and wanted.
I appreciate that so much, and if this was my district, I'd say you just go ahead and drop that mic. Thank you. Collective community advocacy. Thank you for having me this evening. I want to hand it off to my colleague.
Nikki Dr. Lawson. All right, is everybody ready to get up and move? Because we're going to move in just a minute, so mentally prepare for it, all right? So collective community efficacy is the focus of my district this year, is teacher collective efficacy. The definition is group shared belief that they can work together to achieve a goal or produce a desired outcome. It's based on the idea that a group's efficacy can be developed through a process of updating and giving feedback. What is it in terms of what we do as school boards? Jointly, we need to work in collaboration to make our work less taxing on individual districts, but need together, our learning community as a whole, to do what is best for all our students. They are all our students. That is the foundation of the PLC process, or professional learning communities, is something that our teachers sit in on a daily basis, and collectively work together, plan, look at data in the best interest of our students. So never forget, even though we are four separate school districts, all of these students are all of our students. Collectively, we are responsible for every single one of them. So, what we're going to talk about, and what you're going to help us with, is collective efficacy. How do we increase academic excellence collectively through community engagement? So, Dr. Lawson just talked about the fact that engagement is what our priority is, the work we do as four collective school boards. Today, we're going to talk about what are events, goals, and outcomes that we could produce collectively to help increase academic excellence in our learning community as a whole. So if you had the opportunity this year, we had a huge community back-to-school bash. So that would be an example of an event. And just to review, we had the back-to-school bash, it was our key, it was a huge success. We did it jointly, we did it here at Zion Bank Tatchik High School. We had almost 4,000 people attend the back-to-school bash. It's something that I started in Beach Park my first two years as superintendent, and then went to our other four, our other three superintendents and said, I have this great idea that I want to bring all four of our districts together for a big back-to-school event for all of our schools, because they're all of our kids. They engaged me, although I'm sure there were some concerns, but we did it, and we had over 4,000 people there, and over 40 local vendors who set up tables to offer materials to students, opportunities for parents. We handed out t-shirts with our theme for this year, so it was a huge success, and I'm hoping that... Mr. Angelos, did you make that video?
We did, yeah, we invited him.
That's awesome. Mr. Angelos, did you make that video for us? So... Three things you're going to decide. We're going to talk about events, goals, and outcomes. So my example event is we did a huge back-to-school bash for our community. The goals of that was to bring the community together, offer a free event for families, and share our theme for this year. Okay? Outcomes of that event were, we offered the community an opportunity to celebrate a return to school, get kids excited, demonstrate how we value our community as a whole, create a sense of belonging for students and their families, and then create a sense of community across our four school districts. So now you guys are going to have the opportunity to help us come up with some more ideas. But I skipped a slide on accident. So, there are tables set up over here. You're going to split into groups, so you don't have to stay with everybody that's on your school board, so you can spread out. You have three giant postits at your table. One for events, one for goals, and one for outcomes. And what you're going to do is try to come up with suggestions for a collective community event, some goals that align to that, and what outcomes we would be looking to accomplish by doing it. Does everybody understand the assignment? Events, goals, outcomes. All right, I'm going to give you probably 10 minutes. So you have to pick a table. There's markers there, there's big postits there. Come up with as many as you can in 10 minutes. The one over here. You can go wherever you want. We could honestly just stay on this side. We'll go four groups. So the one, 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 one. We're going to stay over here. We don't have that venue, so. So first, you might want to come up with a couple of events, then come up some goals for the events, come up with some outcomes. How many, five people? Uh, come up with maybe three or four people per table. So we're going to stand this side, that way there's one, two, three, four tables over here. One for the events that you'd like to see us do collectively. Nice smile, you're making a good choice. So our event, our town show, an ice cream social. Okay? What are your goals for those events?
Uh, we have to...
She's just taking pictures, she's not recording, I promise.
Well, we centered on one, the ice cream social, and the goals for the ice cream social was to expand past parent, what did you say? Past just parents. We want to include the community members that aren't normally seen as school events.
Okay? And what are the outcomes?
Get community members to engage by, or, I'm sorry, to gain familiarity with who we are. When you have familiarity, hopefully that builds comfort. Comfort hopefully builds trust, and then hopefully trust builds engagement.
Awesome. All right, we're going to come to this group. What are your events? Really loud!
Our first event was to create a multicultural event to be held at the end of the school year for all our districts. It's something we do in Beach Park currently, that we feel would really be greatly expanded upon by creating it as a multi-district event as well. Our goals for that event would be to showcase the many various cultures that exist within our districts, highlighting a multitude of cultures. We can highlight in Beach Park a few, but as we add Zion Six, we're going to add a few more. As we add Winter Park, we're going to add a few more, and we'll have a huge collaborative of many different cultures, and many of our neighbors don't realize what's all out there. And one of the other key goals is to just simply work within a group of our school, district, community, sharing best practices. We found this multicultural event to be a great success in Beach Park, and we want to share it with others. Our outcome for that event would be well over 4,000 people learn about more than one culture that exists within their own neighborhood, creating a feeling that all the students are our students. Our second event was to expand upon the future of a ZB day. I know our eighth graders all get bussed in, but we said, wouldn't it be a need if kids in first grade could learn about some of the opportunities that exist in different sports at our high school level? So how do we take that opportunity of the ZB four day and bring that to our younger levels? Our goals were to open the eyes of younger students and family to the many opportunities that exist, creating one large community again, furthering the engagement within our communities, and have our high school, and one of the key goals of this would be to make sure our high school students are our teachers of the littles. Again, our outcome, show students of all ages that they can learn of the various opportunities that exist at the high school level, again, focusing on creating that feeling that all students are our students.
Awesome. And my last group over here, loud and proud. What are your events?
Okay, so we're saying, a carnival or something, a big end-of-the-year wrap-up. Like, we did the start of the school bash, we have the end-of-the-year wrap-up. Our goals would be community engagement, having everyone involved. If it's like a carnival, maybe we could recruit families, businesses to run different events, that kind of stuff. During this big community thing, we can recognize student achievements, awards, sports teams, academics. We can give staff awards, we can give per-parent award, volunteer award, recognition to PTOs, all that kind of stuff. The outcomes of this is increase the participation and involvement, where do you go? Leading to engagement, and then community investment by planning together, everyone working together. So we would include our small businesses, many that beyond kids in the district. Also, another outcome is modeling and mentoring behavior, inspiring our younger students, not only for the older kids, inspiring the younger students, but the younger students in awe of the older students will also make the older students feel wonderful, right? Because those kids will be jaw-dropping, right? Parent engagement and planning, and finally, the big outcome that we want is building community health and wellness, community pride for everyone in the community. Thank you.
Awesome. We're going to go back to our seats really quick, so thank you all for participating in this, and I believe Diana took pictures, so we will have those to talk about at a future meeting. So boards, thank you so much for taking the time to just participate in the conversation about collective efficacy, and what we can do together for our four school districts as one community for our students. Our next steps are to develop an action plan from your suggestions, so that will be talked about at a future joint meeting. We are going to be planning for the state of education in our learning community event, so our joint board meeting number two that's scheduled for December 10. If you don't know, the state school report cards become official tomorrow, October 30th, so I have a feeling there's a lot of great things to be celebrated for our four school districts. And last, is we will share the joint legacy statements with the community that you agreed to today, so that that is communicated out to our collective learning community. I know in Beach Park District Three, teacher collective efficacy is going to be a focus this year of everything that we do, that we can work smarter, not harder, if we all work together. So I think that is one of our main goals of bringing our four boards of education together, is to talk about that collective efficacy piece, because it has meaning to the outcomes we bring from our school districts. That is all that I have. Thank you.
Okay, there being nothing else from District 126. Okay, I just want to set the stage real quick, because we're trying to do this so that it's logical and in some reasonable order for everybody. In a moment, I will adjourn to our meeting. Beach Park still has some business to complete, so we will adjourn here and then let them complete their business, and then they can do the process to end their meeting. So, I want to thank everybody for adjourn our meeting, thank everybody for participation tonight, thank all of the board members, all the superintendents, all the staff that helped prepare for this, the people from the community that have come to listen, our IFR, Ms. Martinez, for helping professionally develop us even more. And thank you, everybody. We'll look forward to our next opportunity in December. With that, I will adjourn the Zion High School District meeting at 8:24. Thank you.
All right. Our group, for Beach Park, may have a motion to suspend Beach Park High School's probationary teacher, Marilyn Jennings, for three days without pay, as recommended by the administration. That's a motion.
So what?
Second.
Did I hear a second?
I said second.
Andy Luther.
Andy Luther, Marsha White.
Aye.
Andrew Usri.
Aye.
Kelly Ropers.
Aye.
Stephen Lindsey.
Aye.
Anne Houston.
Aye.
Nicole Butler.
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the hardest one, which is adjourned?
So.
Andrew Usri.
Aye.
Stephen Lindsey.
Aye.
Kelly Ropers.
Aye.
Marsha White.
Aye.
Anne Houston.
Aye.
Nicole Butler.
Aye.